Hey Sylvia. Sorry.
Oh, you're great.
Traffic in Quinlan's terrible.
It is horrible.
Construction. So.
I would love to.
I thought maybe you were shocked you got your check there all ready to go.
It's on for me. It's my phone number. So everything was.
Yeah, I was going to take one too. I was like, oh my God. Oh, the road part.
And Sylvia, there are two pages for you to sign. Those are just the copies of the EDC minutes with your official signature. Want to come back to me and want to go to Mary or posting for city council. All right, are we on? Awesome. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 5:35 PM. Would anyone like to give the indication? Would you do the prayer? Let's look.
Because she's looking at it. That's what it is. I think I said one of the states is going to go with them.
Heavenly Father, bless everyone on this board. Help us make the right decisions. Bless the city of West Tewocanee and all that do everything they can for this community. In Father's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rhett, you brought some money.
That was really, really.
If not, it was mine.
I was going to say, I can't believe my wife didn't find that.
All right, so now we'll do announcements. On your agenda, you have the announcements. As you know, we are cosponsoring the first responders luncheon. That will be cosponsored with Quinlan's EDC and Lowenough EDC on May 23rd at 11:45 at the Chamber of Commerce building. We had originally voted for Dale's to provide the meal. Dale's declined. It's too many people for them to be able to provide the meal for. So the chamber has switched to Rancheros. So again, the very importance of making sure that we participate in the chamber functions so that our good restaurant Rancheros, we don't have many out here. We want to support it and make sure that it gets the business to be able to do that. The Team Bass Tournament Memorial Weekend Classic will be on May 24th at 4:30 AM is when check-in starts. That's hosted by the Quinlan ISD Education Foundation. And there are several local businesses that have participated as well as our EDC in sponsoring that event. The Bingo Congregate Meals for Seniors sponsored by the Senior Center Resources and Public Transit in partnership with the volunteer Tewocanee Fire Department will occur on Wednesday, May 21st from 10 to 1 at the fire department. So those are for seniors ages 60 and older. And you can go on the fire department's Facebook site to get the number if you need transportation to be able to get there. The, you'll notice that we are back live. We got an official vote from city council last time to make it legal for us to be YouTube live on our meetings. And the city council is responsible for setting that up and providing an archive for that. So we don't have to worry about doing that. The city government will do that for us. Couple of other things that need to come out in the announcements. This Saturday, May 10th, is the Catfish Festival in the Park sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. Chum on the Water Fishing Guide Service, owners Casey and Amanda Loughlin, are donating rods, reels, hooks, worms, sinkers, bobbers for the first 48 children under the age of 12 who come and attend. So there's a long story behind this. I'm really excited. This business goes out of Anchor Inn and they were wanting to do something special for the kids. They decided to kind of partner with the chamber and with us. So they're going to be at our EDC booth giving out the free to the first 48 kids. So anyone who hears about it, let them know. We got it put up on the city website so the kids can come out and do that. And then Rhett, I want to remind you that you volunteered. You and I vote are hosting that EDC booth and we want to be there Saturday by 9:30 to set up and to be ready to go. Then the other thing announcement is you may have noticed on the West Tewocanee Facebook page, you may have not noticed today, we got it on the city's EDC website. That May's Business of the Month is A1 Liquor. In June, the next business of the month will be Anchor Inn. And they are having a Father's Day weekend jet boat race. North Texas Hot Boats Regalia will come out and will be doing a boat race on June 14th. Most of the RV pads are already rented for Anchor Inn. But they also have the Connected Hotel, Wilding Hotel at Lake Tewocanee. And they still have suites available for people to rent. And the city can post to make sure that everyone sees that there's RV sites in the city park to be able to rent and people can come and camp in the city park. Are there any other announcements? All right. So we'll move on to citizens input. We have your citizens here for input. And now we'll move on to the consent agenda. First, we are going to look A, B, C. The consent agenda includes approval of the EDC minutes for April 7th, approval of the bank statement for April, and approval of bills paid and to be paid. And we're up to date on our bills. Everybody, everybody's been paid. The next bills that are coming in will be, we've got Lee paid today, will be what we decide on when we get to the building. Okay? So the chair will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Now we'll go to the profit-loss statements. And Mary, would you tell us a little bit about the money that you found? What's been changed so how we're getting the tax money coming in as well?
It's been a fun project. Okay, so let's see. Bank statement. There was a, another transaction, the second quarter of 2024 loan coming in March. Really, that should have been last year. We had found this along with some other sales tax transactions were transferred in our finance system, but they were not actually transferred into the bank account. So we're slowly working through those to see which ones have been, which ones haven't, to make sure everybody's numbers match. Right now, we have all of 2024 is taken care of and we're guiding into 2023, making sure all the numbers match there. On your financial statement you see here, remember to, or you may not know, disregard the first three columns because we don't have a monthly budget. The system thinks that we do have a monthly budget, so it wants to try to calculate that. We only have an annual budget. And then when we go through our next budget season, they will adjust that where we won't see that. I want to think of anything else. All sales tax will be allocated monthly. So as we get them, they'll be transferred every month as opposed to quarterly or even further behind that way. So they stay up to date that way.
Well, and I want to thank you for the hard work you've been doing on this budget and on the money and making sure the EDC funds are getting put in there on a monthly basis. Very successful, what's been going on. Now I want to let everyone know too that even when, if, when we vote and approve the profit-loss statements, when you get home, take time to go through your packets. And if there are questions or things that you don't know, just let me know. Send me an email or bring it back out to the next meeting so we can address it. Okay? One of the wonderful things that has happened at city hall is we meet generally once a week, if not twice a week for one to three hours. And Mary's on top of all of it and we go through everything to make sure we're up to date and doing what we're supposed to be doing. And Mary, when do we need to work on our budget for next year?
So on the city council's agenda for next week, we are going to start discussing budget workshops, probably going to start in June, early June, at a minimum of the very end of June, just so we're not cramming it all in August and trying to get it done in September. So I would like to kind of get an idea of framework some by June. Maybe we can look at it early June.
Okay.
If not sooner, if possible. But just to kind of get an idea of when we want to talk about it. And so it's not late, late in the season as it has been the past couple of years.
Sounds good. So I would take a motion for us to approve the profit-loss statements for April.
I'll make the motion.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So next on the agenda is to discuss or take action on the EDC websites. So, and Rhett, this will kind of bring you up to date too on what was decided last week. The decision that was made by the board to shut down. No, that was in the consent agenda. That was included on item six. We made a decision last month to shut down the EDC website that was set up on the GoDaddy page and to use the website that's on city council with Civic Plus. And I recall when I was sitting here in a January meeting, Rhett, you had asked a question about the cost and the expenses that were going to your GoDaddy and why it seemed so high and what was going on with the decision that had been made without a formal vote from this board to do that separate website. So we went back and looked at the actual money that was spent on website. So I just want to confirm for you guys that since June of 2023, so over the past two years, EDC has spent $2,489.24 to have what these two websites. The EDC budgets to pay the city $767 per year to use Civic Plus and the city's website. So we already have our EDC section on that website. And you'll now see things are being posted on there. The decision to also do a separate one with GoDaddy has cost the EDC $955.24. There's nothing, no line item in the budget for that money that was not budgeted for in this past year. So by making the decision last month, we have shut down that website. We have canceled GoDaddy's ability to pull any more money out of our bank account because that was set up on a debit card. And we have stopped that process. And that should really make taxpayers happy that we're not using the money to have two separate websites. The Facebook page, oh, we'll get to that in just a minute. So there's no action needed on that website.
Hey, Don, real quick, before I forget you, what was that first one? You mentioned the bill we were paying with almost $3,000. For what, what exactly was that for?
We paid $767. We paid that per year to the city to use the city's website for EDC. And then the EDC paid $955.24 to GoDaddy to set up that separate website, webpage that was set up.
And we're moving forward with what, just using the city?
Just using the city.
At that price?
Well, this is the price that, $767 is the price that we have to pay anyway. We pay that regardless.
All right, well, so, okay, so what do we get for that?
What we get is we have an entire page on the city's website.
So we just got a link that we route to our own page that we can edit.
Our own page that we edit, that we put information in. That's where our agendas get posted. That's where our minutes get posted. And equally important, that's where legally Civic Plus puts all of that in archival storage for the required two years of the state comptroller's law, by law says we have to maintain it. We also, you'll see in the old packet, everyone on the board has received a copy of the social media policies, which are the laws that were passed by the city last year regarding social media content and what you can put up and not put up. And everything that's put up for any city board, commission, group, has to be approved by the city secretary before it's posted. But by using the city website, that allows us to make sure that's done because she's not putting it up if she doesn't agree with it. The other thing that you find is that you've got the resolution regarding all social media and everything that's created by anyone on a board or commission in the city of West Tewocanee. You cannot, anything you do is the intellectual property of the city. You may not claim that anything you put up or that you post is yours, copyrighted by you, created by you. You have no ownership in that. Anytime you do that on a city website, on a city post, on a city Facebook, it is actually the intellectual property of the city. And that law was passed in 2014 here. Any other questions?
Uh, who's the editor? Not that I volunteer.
Well, it was voted and decided last month that the city secretary, Mary, is the one in charge of it. And the president, whoever's in this position, has the responsibility to give the information to double check it and make sure it's all going up in a timely fashion.
I can close that one.
All right. Anything else?
No.
So let's go on to number nine, discuss and/or take action for the West Tewocanee Economic Development Facebook page. And Rhett, to bring you back up to speed, we have a Facebook page. Jim Turnipseed set it up, hadn't been using it since 2023. We voted to restart it again and we have started reusing it. So on there, please go look at it like we don't have any public postings, public can't respond to it. It's very important that that be the case because this is to promote businesses and economic development. We don't want to pudge a business. For example, our business of the month this month is A1 Liquor. It is up there and it is posted. We don't want it to strangle an employee or somebody who was upset about the price of a beer can to turn around and think that they can turn around and bash the business on an EDC page. And before any business is posted, they have to sign the form that gives us legal permission to be able to post something positive about their business. And there's a double positive that has come to, come with this. Y'all granted me the responsibility to just go from A to Z and hit every business in this city and have them sign that and get it posted. And the positive thing about that is we are finding every business that is closed so that Mary can take it off the business directory and every new business that is open, so Mary can post it on the business directory. So we're working hand in glove now with the city government to make sure that all of our businesses get recognized and they get on our city's website. So they're all very excited after this. In June, again, it'll be Anchor Inn. That will be our June. Any discussion or anything else about the Facebook page? All right, let's go on to number 10. We're going to go into executive session now to discuss deliberations on the real property. And then we will also, number 11 is a possible executive session regarding personnel matter. We will be having an executive session on the personnel matter. So when we come back out, then we'll take votes. We'll discuss and take votes. Okay?
Excuse me?
Can we pause? I will use it. Okay, see, not my responsibility. Wow!
We got a remote control. We got.
We got a...
So we are out of executive session at 6:20 p.m. Yeah, 6:20. And you want to go straight back in or can we do the building? Okay, let's go ahead and do the building first. So we were in executive session. We talked about the things that have gone on with the building. U-Bake's electrical bid has been accepted. And so they're the ones who are going to be putting electricity in the building. So we get it up and ready for commercial rental use, for commercial storage. And the garage doors have been repaired from the lowest bid. So that's been taken care of. So now we need to make a decision about whether or not the board wants to authorize me to get two estimates and quotes and take the lowest one to replace the door on the external side of the building, the metal door, or one that matches the front door, which then will work and secure the building, and to add a door on the wall that we're going to have built between the two sections, to get two bids for insulation, repair, and all the repair work that needs to happen inside the building to bring it up to code, and then two bids for the plumbing. And the board needs to decide whether or not we want to get plumbers' bids to create a bathroom, or plumbers' bids to seal off the plumbing that's there so there's no gas leaks, sewer leaks into the building itself.
I think it depends on if we divide it up or not. Because if we're going to rent the second section, there's somebody different they may want to buy. But of course, we could both put it in at home.
Right. That's a problem for future homework.
Yeah.
So are y'all all in agreement that we want to go ahead and get the doors at least repaired, get insulation, the internal stuff done, so that it'll pass inspection once the electrical work is done, and to get a bid to seal off that plumbing so it's safe?
Did we come across, what was the rent?
We haven't decided yet.
And how much, what's our, is there, what's this, total, total?
Of what?
All these repairs?
We won't know what all the total is until we get the bids in.
Oh, we already have all the total bids?
But the, no, because we don't have bids on the door, on the insulation or the interior work, or on the plumbing. And how much did you say we have in our budget that we budgeted? It's over $25,000 is in our budget already this year for repair on the building. So we are significantly below right now. All right, so the chair would entertain a motion for us to move forward on the doors, any door repair, and the plumbing?
I'll second.
I've got a motion, I've got a second. All in favor? Unanimous. All right, now we'll go into executive session again at 6:25 p.m. All right, everyone's set. All right, so we're coming back into open public session at 6:34 p.m. All right, so we met to discuss personnel matter regarding the resignation of Kathy O'Neill from the EDC board. No, no. I'm sorry, I can't. Forgive me. It was at the top of the text message. Now, I'm getting tired. Glad we're not meeting at 7:00. A resignation from Elizabeth Osborne from the EDC board, and the application that has been submitted to take her place by Casey Loughlin. So just as a note for the record, on April 7th, Elizabeth Osborne sent a text message to Kathy and said that, I'll paraphrase her, the reading is completely on the record. But she says she's so sorry she can't be on the board anymore. Her hands are full. She is working on getting a master's degree, and she has a workload that just takes up all of her time. She's been on this board for a very long time. I want to say, you know, for the record, I really appreciate her service. I'm sure all of us do, and the city does. She has given so much to this city. And she said that she would email a letter of resignation, but just like, you know, she had some trouble, she hasn't been here for a couple of meetings. We're going to need to take this text message as her resignation rather than, you know, ask her to send an email because she is so busy. She said that she's enjoyed working with everyone in the city for all of these years. She will continue to pray for the success in all that the board does for the city going forward. Respectfully, Elizabeth. So the city always takes applications for board positions and committee positions and city council positions. People are always applying, and they have a stack of those that come in and that are maintained. The city will go ahead and post this as an open position. City council will meet next Tuesday. Anyone in the public who wants to apply for this position has a week to do that in and to get that to City Hall. And the application that we have received is from Mr. Casey Loughlin. Casey Loughlin owns a company called Chums on the Water. It's a fishing guide service that works out of Anchor Inn. They also own a larger company, a pool outdoor living construction company called Oasis. He and his wife have lived in the city now for 14 years. They were 13 years down in Anchor Inn, and then they bought a property in Indian Oaks. And so they live here on the water. They've worked for this city. They do know people in the city, and they're very invested in making sure that we bring economic development here. He will be present at the city council meeting on Tuesday. So city council members can ask questions and meet him. So the chair would entertain a motion to accept Elizabeth Osborne's resignation and to recommend Casey Loughlin for her position.
I made that motion.
I was thinking that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. Now we'll go on to number 12, discuss and/or take action on certificates of deposits for the West Walk in the EDC. I just want to come back and confirm for you that we were able to take out a certificate of deposit for $50,000. So that's been moved into a six-month CD. The interest rates for EDCs and businesses is lower than the interest rates for individuals, but I think we got a good one. We've got an interest rate of 3.25% for the next six months. And then the other CD that the city found for us at this time has $59,039.50. That is located under the city's tax ID number. It will come to maturity in June, and then Mary will move it over to the EDC's tax ID number. I'm sure that was just done as an inadvertent error when it was set up years ago. So is there any discussion on that?
No.
Okay, all right. And there's no action to be taken on that. So we'll go to number 13. I wanted us to take a moment and to talk about the facade improvement grant program. So in your packet, I included a copy of the facade improvement grant program. This is the paperwork that was being used up through 2021. This is a contract that businesses would sign, and they would match a grant from the EDC of $2,500 to improve the facade, the outside of their building. The purpose of it was to improve the look of the city and city businesses on 276. So that when people are driving in, when new businesses are coming in, people feel, you know, they have something good to look at rather than looking at it and going, oh, looks like this place is falling down. There have been no facade grants done, '22, '23, '24. So, and I wasn't here. It did, so y'all tell me, did the board decide not to do those anymore?
Never, never brought it up. Just never brought it up.
Now, I ran into the lady that started the doggy place right there by the beauty shop in Margie's. Anyway, she said, I never heard of these. Don't know what to do. So I explained it to her. Still didn't. You know, people would like that when they don't know what something is, and that's legitimate, I guess. I think we need to get the word out a little bit more. My question is, and I've complained about this forever, that there is something written up, and the council voted to take the old signs down. Now, they may be grandfathered in, some of them. But I brought an investor out here, and they declined to buy out here because they said it's too junky looking coming in the west. So we need those signs down, and we need to do some thought grants to clean it up.
Okay, all right. Well, that's why I wanted to bring it up here, because I thought they were working really well in the past. I know that people, businesses were able to use it and to get it, you know, get their businesses looking nice up on the road front. So I guess what I'd like is, because this is such a legal contract, I want to go over it with Lee, because it obviously was drawn up by the former attorney. And it's got all kinds of jargon in it regarding you have to pay your 2,500 first, and then you apply for the grant to match what you've done. And there's a lot, again, a lot of steps in doing this. So I'd like to go to our attorney and see if we can minimize this and cut this down and make it a more helpful, easier-to-use program where people can use it. So it was never closed, so I don't think we need to take any action. I just needed to, you know, understand the background of this. So this facade grant program still exists. So anybody out there on YouTube, it'll be on our minutes. You can go ahead and come down to City Hall. You can read this contract because now the city secretary has it. We have an application for you to fill out, and we have money to help the front of your business look awesome.
Great.
All right. I have a question on that, though.
Yep.
Was this, was this budgeted at all?
Yes, it's always been in the budget. I don't know it's in the current budget.
That's where I was asking about.
But we'll be redoing our budget here in June. So.
That was my question.
We will be looking to see about cutting it in the budget so that we're able to do that.
We have so many, or however many we want to do.
Yes.
Okay.
And are you talking about old signs for businesses and things that no longer exist?
Yes. Like Margie's grocery store. That one sticks out like a sore thumb.
It sure does. That's why Norman was talking.
Okay. Okay, if it was grandfathered in, would the EDC pay to take it down?
Well, we can, it would, speaking as if I'd spoken to Lee, it belongs to the people who own the property, so it is their sign. However, if we put it in our budget and we bring it up next month, and we look at an offer to put that under the facade improvement, that improves the facade of that building. So the gentleman who owns that building that sold Margie's may very well love to make an application for us to come in and to remove that, or change it and spruce it up and make it look something different to the assistance of his building and to assist with that. And I think we can probably do that under the facade improvement grant. So I will talk with the city secretary, I mean, the city attorney about that. I'll give you any I'll give you any more work. But yeah, we'll go back to putting this in place and getting it up and running. So I'll have more for you in June, and for the public, for us to be able to look at and vote on, and to simplify the process.
We have a fence ordinance. For the junky stuff, I'm saying, any fences.
And again, it may be that we have a new fence ordinance, some businesses are grandfathered out because they weren't there to begin with, but they may be interested in applying for a facade grant to assist with cutting a fence in, because that would certainly improve the look of their property. And that would definitely improve the look of the city.
Yes.
All right, so we don't need to take any action on 13. So we'll go to 14. Are there any future agenda items that y'all would like to have on?
I should know that you know already, but I met with Fox. I don't know when you want that update, not that it's huge.
Can we do that in future agenda items? It's going to be on a future agenda item. Okay?
Box communications update. And also, I can't remember what it was, but when I first wished Christmas, I'll crush your hair. I can't remember what it is, I can't remember if the city council made it up P&amp;Z, but we were talking at some point, I heard people mentioning that every year there was a budget for buildings to be torn down and moved away at someone's expense within our town, I don't remember who it was.
So we get, within our contract of blackjack or garbage contract, that there is so many we could do for the city, that we, that could actually take out.
And how many have they been doing? And how many years?
Well, no, we've been wanting this to perform, done a long time.
Okay, so maybe take advantage of that. I don't know. And nobody wants to see me going on YouTube and city council pushing anymore, so somebody else might want to.
Look at you looking at me.
I'm just saying, I think they've got enough, well, actually, it's a whole brand of city councils, maybe they have it.
But I do think that is something that the city is able to do, and they don't need our EDC money to do that, they have the money to do that themselves.
Sometimes they need to push.
Want me to hire an attorney?
Well, how long, what was the thing you just cut down? A big plan.
Our plan, our brand's a plan.
Right, I only did nine months of YouTube ditching on a video.
All right, so for a future agenda item, we'll have the Fox update when they're coming in, what their plans are, and how that's going. Okay? All right. I would take a motion to adjourn at 6:40.
Before adjourned, I want a committee to thank this young man for all that work that he did on that building over there on his own.
Thank you, young man. Much appreciated.
You're welcome, buddy. Make a motion that we adjourn.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.